Mr. There, Mr. O'Connell.
Make sure he spelled it right.
That's happened to me already.
Where he is?
It is, I checked it.
Got a new, new, new plates for downstairs and out in the garage. They're just not up yet. I wanted them up before that he left, but...
Did they come in yet?
They're in.
You know, it takes this...
Are these on?
Hopkins a while sometimes.
Unless somebody hit them off.
Yeah, they're on.
They're on. Mine's not on.
It is.
It's a little button. Danny, I'll do it.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Oh, there's students here from the high school. We're waiting on, um, Malan, Kenny.
Is Jim here?
And Tony.
Is Jim, is Jim back, or didn't he go?
Who?
Jim was going away.
I don't know if Jim's back or not. Here comes Tony.
Here's Tony.
Is it, they have a second one too?
What?
Oh, you have two vacations.
I'm surprised. It was made up before I got here today, and Tommy said it's a whole new meeting, so if I ask. Because you're actually gonna go through...
I'm all right, I'm all right. Oh, you're welcome, enjoy it.
...that and start over.
Breakfast, breakfast Angela, there you go.
I heard, yeah, that's it, that's it.
And I told you...
Kenny.
Ken's the only other one that's...
Why is Jim here?
I think you're, oh, yeah, the one that's essentially, he's getting sworn in tonight.
Yeah.
So is, oh, Jim isn't, that's right.
No, Matt is here. I was wondering, he said he was gonna come up. Joe. You picked the right night tonight, let me tell you.
You better get him signed now.
SRO.
The first meeting should only be about fifteen minutes. The second, then there's a swearing in, and the second meeting, maybe thirty minutes.
Maybe, you think?
Sure. Who's your teacher? Which one you have? Child's, alright.
I coached him in basketball.
I had him as a student. It's old I am.
How many you need? You need any more, just one? Okay, well.
Here comes Jim. Just Ken. He can, he's, Ken's gotta get sworn out today, so he gets sworn out tomorrow.
How was, how was your trip? Are you alright? I wasn't sure if you were going or you were waiting. Okay, I was gonna say, you're not very dense.
There's...
Okay.
John, Mark. Mark, Mark. Can I have Mark and John sit up here? Well, one of them here, Tony, why don't you sit up at this table, the children's, sit up at the kids' table. Ken, there's chairs over here.
Can you get in there?
I don't know where Kenny is, hope he remembered it was tonight. Yeah, I know.
Well, I hope there wasn't another sink hole up our way.
That lady that was interviewed, she said, that we were told when we built our house, she said there were sinkholes there. There's never a sink, I said, I used, I said to the reporter, I said, Emma, I don't know what she's talking about, I don't know if any, I used to, my buddy Bert Heinlein owned the apartment complex here, and we used to play in this field all the time.
That never, that never sunk.
No, it had a fire, but it never sunk.
Closest one was that St. John's?
It's already six o'clock. Well, it's six o'clock, and I don't like to start late, but, um, we're waiting on one of our council members who does have to get sworn in tonight. So if anybody knows where Mr. Brown is, it'd be good for him to be here.
Yeah, I would think.
Here he comes. That's a prize! Fashionably late, huh, Mr. Brown? Okay. We know. I'd like to call this meeting of City Council order, it's not one of our stated sessions, but feel rise, the invocation tonight is gonna be given by Pastor Susan Ruggles, and will remain standing for the Pledge of the Flag.
To the one we call holy. We stand before you on this day in the year 2020. We are people who live in neighborhoods, people who work in various places, people who strive to make Easton a home, safe, clean, and comfortable, and who strive to make Easton a community. People who care for, care for and by one another. Keep your watchful eye on each of us, that we do the best using our abilities to truly make a difference in the lives of others. We pray, amen.
Amen. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Edinger?
Here.
Mr. Milan?
Here.
Mr. O'Connell?
Here.
Dr. Ruggles?
Here.
Mrs. Volcano?
Here.
Mayor Panto?
Here. No, go ahead. Approval of the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second. Moved in second, any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Edinger?
Aye.
Mr. Milan?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mrs. Volcano?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye. At this time, we have approval of our minutes from our December eleventh meeting.
Move.
Second.
Move in the second, any additions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Edinger?
Aye.
Mr. Milan?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mrs. Volcano?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye. This time, we have presentation of gifts to two people who are, who are, one's moving on to the big house, and one's moving south to the sunny weather. So, uh, at this time, I would like to just present a appreciation gift from the residents of the city and from our city council to Mr. Tony Basile. You've been a good friend. And, uh, we look forward to you moving up to the big hill, but you're only a short drive down, because you can't walk. But you could drive down, because that's a big hill up there, and, uh, want you to come down and see us once in a while, and, uh, make sure you do that for us, so...
Would like the pizza place, Mayor.
So, uh, I'll let City Council say a few words, let me present this plate to you on behalf of the residents of, uh, City of, City of Easton. Mr. Myers, council member? I'll do it afterwards. Tony, you've been a great help to us financially, uh, you know what it was like back in two thousand seven, you were appointed, when I took office in two thousand and eight, and today it's much different, we thank you and our incoming controller for that help. Uh, you and Chris worked together with our team, and we have a much different city today because of our finances, and you were a big part of that, so I want to extend my thanks to you personally. I think you're gonna do great for, things for the county of Northampton, and, uh, we wish you all the best, and we wish you good health into 2020.
You just stole all my stuff, my thunder, everything I usually say. Thank you, Tony, for all your help. You've been a very good friend and a good thing for the city. We're gonna miss you. Don't be a stranger. But if I don't see you, I'll just have to come visit you at the Carmel Corn, or maybe come up the hill, which I'll have to drive because I can't walk up either. So, good luck to you, and I know you will do very well up there. We're very happy for you, thank you.
Tony, it goes without saying that our friendship goes much more than professional, but, uh, I wanted to take you back just a little bit when we first met. It was myself, Pam Panto, and you on W E S T. And from that day forth, we became friends. And I want to thank you for all that you've done for the city of Easton, and now what you would do for the county. Congratulations on your new position. I look forward to having pizza with you.
Oh, he was, he was hoping you would say like, you know, lobster filet.
I gotta wa... You can put that on yours.
Tony, um, controller is one of those jobs where you don't get much thanks, because you're just sitting there making sure everything is right, you know, and, and, um, and it, it... People don't recognize the fact that the city has increased their, um, the amount of money that they have set aside for future, uh, and our budgets coming in, uh, under budget, uh, year after year, and a large portion of that is due to your work as a controller. And, and, um, I, I wish you well up at the county, I know it's a much, much, much bigger job, uh, a much bigger, uh, group to look after up there, but, um, uh, I, I know that you will do well, and, and, uh, I want to thank you for everything you've done here.
Tony, thank you so much for all your professional assistance. You've been a friend, obviously, for the past, uh, four decades for me. So, um, best of luck to you at the county, we're gonna miss you here, obviously, but I'm sure I'll see you at some point, so thank you so much.
Tony, thanks for your years of service, uh, as I said before, it's definitely the county's gain and the city's loss. Um, I'm sure you're gonna do a great job for the county, and, um, I'll be seeing you and CI around town anyway, at the Carm, probably at the Carmel Corn shop every Saturday, so it's not like we're never gonna see each other again, but, uh, thanks very much for all of your service to the city, you've done a fantastic job.
Yeah, Tony, I, I as well, thank you for your years of dedicated service. Just, I, I thank you for your friendship, you've been a friend for quite some time now, I wish you all the best up there, and don't forget us down here at the bottom of the hill.
Tony, would you like to say anything?
I just want, would like to say, thank you to all the taxpayers here that they gave me that confidence. And I'm not leaving the city, because now the city is part of my job also, you know, other than I only was serving the city, but now I'm serving Easton, Bethlehem, Wingab, you know, every city in the county. But I just want to say thank you to all of you. Many thanks, Mayor, each member council, um, many thanks to Tom Hess that he couldn't be with us tonight, I visited him to the hospital to say thank you. Rita, thank you so much. And the most important, that it is my honor to receive this, and also, I love to say that I really served the city with my heart, with integrity, with experience, and results. You know, like the mayor said, we took over with a B B B minus credit rating, we worked hard together, I was part of the Home World Charter, we built that, at least the most important for me, as a controller, I did build, I consider that I did build a good finance department, and results, I was part of the new building here, my name is on the plate. And, again, is like the mayor said, and council members, I'm walking out of here, and I'm leaving that office in good hands. So, thank you so much again for everything, and Mayor, definitely, you know, with part of my job now as the new county controller, definitely are gonna be dealing, you know, and seeing maybe most of you, hopefully, you know, on every event, so thank you so much.
Thank you. I'll try to get through this next part, but it's our, our city solicitor is retiring, uh, Bill Murphy, um, there's very few things that I can do as mayor that are special, and I've only done this in twelve years, probably less than twelve times. So, in addition to your plate, I'd like to just make a few words, and I'd like to read this proclamation. Where Bill immediately became an active member of our community through involvement in various organizations such as the Eastern Area J C's, the Eastern Lions Club, the Northampton County Bar Association, and many more. And whereas in nineteen eighty-eight, Bill Murphy became Assistant City Solicitor for the City of Easton and ultimately named City Solicitor in nineteen ninety-three, and also became the Solicitor for Northampton County, I'm sorry, Northampton Community College, and has had a remarkable influence on both of these organizations, always offering fair and just legal opinions. And whereas Attorney Murphy has graced our community not only with his service and legal opinions, but also with his unique sense of humor and his New England-style slang. Mr. Murphy has served all clients with a gentlemanly style and always with deep respect for all people, and whereas his adopted hometown wishes Bill happiness and good health, as he attends this last meeting of Eastern City Council this evening, he will be missed by all as he retires to spend more time with his wife, Chris, his sons, Williams and, William and Peter, and his grandchildren. Now therefore, I, Salvatore J. Panto Jr., Mayor of the City of Easton, hereby proclaim today, January second, twenty twenty, as William K. Murphy Day in Easton. And ask that all of our residents recognize the decades of service Bill has given to our city, and wish him happiness and good health in his retirement. He will be missed.
Yes, he will.
You have some lions here too that came to see you tonight, so I appreciate that. Former president, immediate past president, right, Howie? Yeah?
Roar, lions roar. The last time I was up here, I think I cried a river.
Yes, you did.
Enough to quench the small drought.
Make everybody else with it.
So I hope I don't do that again. I've written down a couple of things, so I'm gonna hopefully stay on course. If I break down a little bit, stick with me. I thank each member of City Council for their support and kindness, and for your trust. Boy, I'm not gonna do it. For thirty-two years as your assistant and city solicitor. To Joel Share, I'm thankful for his seventeen years of support and guidance and assistance. I wish Joel much success as city solicitor, as well as his pending successor, Attorney Jeremy Clark. To newly affected, to newly elected officials, Mayor Panto, Councilman Brown, Councilman Milan, Councilman O'Connell, Controller Hegel, and County Controller, Tony Basile, I offer my congratulations and wish for success in the future. During my employment with the City of Easton, I received kind support and help from all city employees. To you, please accept my gratitude and appreciation for all that you've done for me and have done. The list is too long to mention everyone by name, because I'd probably miss someone. I could not have done my job without you. As the mayor said on January fourth, nineteen eighty-eight, I was appointed an Assistant City Solicitor under Mayor Sal Panto. And I am retiring under the term of the best mayor the City of Easton ever had. And the best first lady in Easton, Pam Panto. To Sal Panto Senior, there has never been a better father and a better man to follow through life. I'm gonna close, uh, with an old Irish blessing, I think probably most of you have heard. May the road rise to meet you, may the wind forever be at your back. May the sun shine warm upon your face, and may the rain fall soft upon your fields. And until we meet again, may God hold you in the hollow of His hand. Lighter note. I was gonna present this to Tom Hess. Who is our commander of speeches and the time limitation that you have when you get up before City Council, I was gonna give this to Tom Hess. But your five minutes are up. My, my five minutes are up, I appreciate it, thanks so much. Happiness and health to everyone.
At this time in our meeting, in every meeting, we have public comment on agenda items only, there is time for public comment at the end of the meeting, um, anyone who can address City Council publicly? Consent agenda, there's no consent agenda, there's no reports to be received, there's no correspondence, there's no unfinished business, Madam Clerk, uh, new business.
We have a resolution being introduced by Mayor Panto, resolved by the Council of the City of Easton, that Jeremy F. Clark Esquire of three eighteen Spring Garden Street, Easton, is hereby appointed to the position of First Assistant City Solicitor effective January fourth, two thousand twenty.
I move this on, um, the recommendation of the committee that, um, we had with the solicitors, Mr. Campos, a number of the people, I did not serve on the committee, as, as you all know, under this new charter, uh, the mayor doesn't do the hiring, uh, Mr. Campos does the hiring, but in the charter it does say that the mayor makes the recommendation to City Council, so I formed the committee, and, uh, Mr. Jeremy Clark, who's over here on my left next to the police chief, um, he was selected for this position, there's one more position to be hired sometime in June, um, so I'd like to move that resolution. To move.
Second.
Second or second it? Move in second discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Edinger?
Aye.
Mr. Milan?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mrs. Volcano?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye. And let me say that the applications that were received, I did see them, wow, um, we had a lot of very qualified, competent, uh, attorneys who wanted to serve the city, and that was, um, very heartwarming to me, to know that people from the legal profession want to be a part of this city, so I really appreciate that. Uh, any public comment on any item at this time before City Council? Moving on, we'll look for adjournment before swearing in. So move.
Second.
Moved in second, roll call.
Mr. Milan?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mrs. Volcano?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Edinger?
Aye. For our students from Eastern Area High School government classes, um, we are now gonna be going into this swearing in of the new officers that have been elected as of November, was it November fifth, right? Yeah, November fifth. So, uh, at this time, I'd like to call on the honorable Jack Pinella, who's gonna be swearing me in, Jack is well-known to the Easton community, served in the Northampton County Bar, uh, prior to winning, uh, being elevated to the bench of the Superior Court, um, he's been a loyal friend, and I'd like to call him up for swearing in. At this time, we also have another dignitary in the crowd, uh, he's a former student of mine, federal court now, um, district court right here in local downtown Easton, uh, Judge Smith. There he is, Ed, Judge Edward Smith, is gonna swear in Councilmember David O'Connell.
This time we call up our new incoming city controller, who has given me the honor of swearing me in, Mr. Chris Hegel. Now we'll have the swearing in of Councilmember Ken Brown. I can't, it's over there on top of your desk.
I just solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth. And that I will discharge the duties of the office of city council with the gallows.
At this time, I'll ask for, we already adjourned that meeting, so we'll go into a new meeting. So we'll take two minutes to have Pastor Ruggles come up for another invocation. This will be the first meeting of the new council, even though they're the same, we're the same. It is the first meeting of the new, new year.
Did you want a two-minute invocation? No. I was just gonna say ditto, but I guess I should.
Please rise for the invocation, followed by the pledge of the flag.
One we call holy, as we start this new year, please bless all of us that we go forward always doing your will. We pray this. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Edinger?
Here.
Mr. Milan?
Here.
Mr. O'Connell?
Here.
Dr. Ruggles?
Here.
Mrs. Volcano?
Here.
Mayor Panto?
Here. At this right, at this time, we have another time for citizens to be heard on agenda items only. Okay, we'll move on to the mayor's inaugural address.
I am honored and humbled to stand here as mayor of my hometown. As I prepare for an unprecedented fourth term, I'm even more excited today than I was twelve years ago. I have the energy and the passion to continue making Easton the best that it can be. It's an exciting time to be serving our city. I wouldn't be here today without the support of some very important people. First, I'd like to recognize my wife Pam, who has always been there to support me, and her advice has always been welcome. She spent six years on city council, and I trust her judgment, most times better than my own. She pushes me to be a better person. My father, Sal Senior, the patriarch of our family, he has given me more than he'll ever, never, ever know. To my children who have supported me in so many ways, they've been there for me, time after time, and they've given me my greatest gifts, eight grandchildren. To my brothers, sisters, and their spouses, who have been my biggest helpers and supporters, thank you. And to my extended family and friends, many of whom are here today, thank you also. Thank you also to my longtime friends, Howie Lewis, Royal Burpee, and Randy Galiato, who have chaired our successful political campaigns. To my dear friend Bill Murphy, who is retiring this evening, he's been with me since the day he arrived in Easton and our involvement in the Eastern Area J.C.'s way back in the seventies. I know you students don't know that, but if you look it up in history books, there are things called nineteen seventies. It wasn't a good year for architecture or for, for music. He has been not only my supporter and good friend, but also respected advisor, has always given me sound advice. I will miss him and his wife Christine. I wish them good health in their retirement. To the members of city council, thank you for your cooperation, support, and working closely with our administration to make things happen for our residents. And tonight, I say goodbye to one friend and welcome back another to city hall. To Tony Basile, best wishes in your new role with the county. And to incoming controller Chris Hegel, who was a big part of our financial turnaround, he was my first director of finance, welcome back. These two men deserve a lot of the credit for the situation we were in today financially, and it's good. To my directors, all of them who are here, employees, and hundreds of volunteers, many in this room today have worked so hard, sharing their time and talents to make Easton again the jewel of the Lehigh Valley. I extend my thanks for making a positive difference. When I took office in two thousand eight, Easton was facing millions in deficits, and our neighborhoods were plagued by gang violence, drugs, and blighted properties. All that has changed, and today is a different place, a different city. Crime has decreased annually, our finances are much better, we have annual surpluses in all twelve years. We haven't raised real estate taxes, and there's been no increase in sewer trash since two thousand nine. Our reserve account, millions of dollars in deficits, is now more than five million dollars in reserves. The results are unheard of in most of the Pennsylvania cities and those in the Northeast. Throughout our city, blighted vacant buildings are being transformed. The private community and the public sector has invested almost one million, one billion dollars, which is transforming our city into the city we all remember and want it to be again. Our administration has also been successful in being awarded more than eighty million dollars in state, federal, and county grants. Our restaurant and entertainment segments continue to grow, and today, our city supports more than one hundred and twenty festivals, which are bigger than ever, with Bacon Fest attracting more than eighty-five thousand people from all over the country. For the first time in five decades, Easton's population is actually growing instead of declining. Yes, Easton is experiencing a wonderful renaissance, and two thousand twenty will bring private investment in all parts of our city as we develop the whole town, not just the downtown. Throughout this renaissance, we will continue to be mindful of our history, optimistic about our future, and determined to fulfill a vision that will be appreciated by each new generation. On South Side, the Black Diamond Affordable Housing Development and the Eastern Yards Project will commence in former blighted vacant properties for more than three decades. In the West Ward, the six hundred block of Walnut Street's new apartment structure will come online this year, and the six hundred block of North Hampton Street Schwartz Project will bring a grocery store to this food desert. In the Central Business District, mid-year will be welcoming one hundred seventy-five employees of Hearst Publishing. The Commodore Project will commence in the former Kaplan's Building, fifty-six North Third Street, the former Boyd Theater Lot, the Ferry Street Development, these will all begin, and there's others that I can't even talk about at this time. Construction of the Fourth Street Parking Deck and Pedestrian Plaza will start with a projected completion of June twenty, of two thousand twenty-one. It will enhance our revitalization and economic development efforts even further. And on College Hill, we'll be welcoming four hundred additional students that will contribute more than six million dollars a year to our local economy and enable our local college, founded by local Estonians, who knew the value of having a college in the city, to remain competitive as one of the finest educational facilities in the country. The committee of residents I established to review and interview potential developers of the former Days Inn Lot will be making a recommendation to city council in the first quarter of two thousand twenty. The developments proposed are all in excess of sixty million dollars, and the committee members are doing an excellent job and asking really great questions. Their next meeting is Monday night. All of these developments mean more tax dollars to our city and more people. And more people and more taxable properties are paying their share, and the burden isn't just on those of us who reside here, whether it be residents, businesses, or property owners. Our goal is to restore Easton to what it was pre-urban renewal. We have not arrived at this moment by chance. Our city staff and volunteers are working every day, and our administration will continue to make it happen. While we may be criticized for trying things that don't succeed, we remember the words of President Franklin Delano Roosevelt. Let us engage in bold, persistent experimentation. It is common sense to take a method and try it. If it fails, admit it frankly and try another, but above all, try something. Fortunately, the things that haven't worked are few, and the successes have been many. Our administration will not sit by and wish for improvement. It doesn't happen. We will continue to make things happen to improve our city. And while our critics will say things like Da Vinci was a failure, watch out. What we're working on right now will be even better. Our staff is devoted to making Easton more prosperous, more inclusive, and more vibrant for our residents, businesses, and our visitors. Yes, Easton is back, but today's not a time to just rest on our successes or talk about yesterday. Today is a time to talk about tomorrow. Without question, we face challenging times ahead. Our national discourse, once filled with hope and optimism, has been replaced by cynicism, hatred, and anger. Federal politics today is no longer politics of cooperation and compromise, but politics of divisiveness. In Easton, we are steadfast in the conviction that our city's strength comes from our diversity and a fierce sense of unity, equity, and inclusion. We may have debates, but we all seek to do what is best for the people we serve. We may take different paths, but our destinations will always be the same. For a community that saw a decline in population beginning in the fifties, to a community today that has seen significant growth, our focus must turn to optimism, that we must optimize the growth while maintaining our diversity and creating communities, a community that benefits all residents. Whether born or raised here or a newcomer, the people that live here are what make this city special. I am proud of the work we've accomplished, the investments we made in our community, and the foresight in our progressive plans for the future. It's with the same sense of camaraderie that we continue to carry on our traditions, take pride in our rich history, and at the same time, embrace the diversity and change that move us forward. Together in a way that we will make a positive difference. We have no time for the negative. Our work is not done. We face significant challenges where there are ever-increasing pension legacy costs, affordable housing, and affordable rental rates, preserving our historic structures, improving our infrastructure, strengthening our economic base and tourism, preparing for the impacts of climate change, and addressing the opioid crisis. It's not being addressed at the federal level or the state level. It's come down to where the rubber meets the road. All of these challenges need to be met. Yep, there's much to do. Home, a home is the social foundation any family's economic security is built on. It is the one item that can give a family, a poor family, equity. Protecting and improving the affordability of houses and rental units must be a priority, and we will be bringing with, we work with organizations like the Greater Lehigh Valley Chamber of Commerce and the Lehigh Valley Economic Development Corporation to attract, attract to the Lehigh Valley family-sustaining jobs so that our residents can afford to live here. The American dream should be a dream for all, and when the market refuses to respond, we must step in to ensure that it becomes an attainable reality for all people, regardless of their socioeconomic strata. We need to offer a range of housing choice in the market so that there's something for everyone. And that means market rates as well as housing, and market rates for apartments and housing as well. Cities can no longer be the dumping zone for the nation's ills, but we can be the engine for change and assistance for the people who are less fortunate. That is the goal in the creation of the mayor's task force, force on affordable housing. We've come a long way, and we've had the opportunity to continue to build on our successes, as well as meet and overcome the problems and challenges still facing our city. We have become a successful city, recognized in many ways, many awards, for our innovation and for meeting and overcoming challenges. Yes, we've even have had many successes, but they are not enough. When, when one of today's students that are here tonight, perhaps one of your own children or grandchildren, is being sworn in as a mayor or council member in the future, I want them to be able to say that back in the day, back in our day, Easton made the right choices, the smart choices. We want them to be, we want them to say that we recognize and honor the value and dignity of all people, and that we cared for the less fortunate, that we partnered with all who shared our vision, that we made a commitment to focus on every square mile of our city, and that we expanded our view of resiliency and sustainability. Our challenges are great, there's no mistaking that, but I have high hope for the future. To my family, friends, colleagues, directors, employees, and partners on city council, I say I can't wait to get started working closely with you again for the next four years. Because every day is a gift, every minute counts, and every second matters. Let's continue to build our city together, let's set the bar high, and over the next four years, let's all of us reach it together. Thank you very much, and may God bless all of us.
At this time, we'll hear from remarks by elected officials, so we'll start with Sandra.
Thank you, Mayor. It's a pleasure to serve with you for the next four years, possibly, we'll see. But it's also a pleasure to be with the three new councilmen that are with us once again. I look forward to working with all of you and moving the, the city forward. Thank you.
I'd just like to echo that also, Mayor. It's been a pleasure to work with you over the years and look forward to rolling up our sleeves and see what two thousand twenty and beyond has for us.
I, I agree that the city has a lot of things on the table in the next few years, and I think many of those are gonna be great challenges for us. And, and looking into the future and how are we going to adapt to the growth that we're going to experience is, is going to be a great challenge, and I, I look forward to working with everybody on council and the mayor to, to meet those challenges.
I'm actually looking forward to another four years with all my colleagues, with the, with the directors, city staff, and hopefully we can continue our success in the future.
It's been a pleasure these last four years, working with all the members of, on city council and with all of the directors and staff at city hall. It's just been a great experience for me. It's been a big learning curve that I'm still on. I look forward to the next four years. I look forward to, as Roger said, all of the challenges facing the city. But I think we have a very good elected body here who can meet any challenge that comes our way, so thanks very much.
I would just congratulate those of you who were re-elected and our newly elected controller and like the rest of you, I look forward to the, at least for the next two years, maybe four.
Thank you, all councilmembers. At this point, we have a election of the vice mayor. The vice mayor under our charter chairs the meetings when I'm not available, when, when the mayor's not here. Is there any nominations? Sandra?
I would like to place the name of Kenneth Brown in nomination for vice mayor.
I'd like to second that. Any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll close the nominations. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Edinger?
Aye.
Mr. Milan?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mrs. Volcano?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Brown.
Congratulations. Thank you, Mayor, colleagues.
Know what the motto is, Brown delivers.
There you go. On time.
On time. At this time, appointments to standing committees by the mayor, I've sent out an email. Everyone that's been, I'll, I'll place that email into the record, Miss Mesa, and move that. It doesn't need any action, but it's the appointments. Appointments, citizens' right to be heard on any item that would like to bring before city council. Hearing none?
Move, adjourn.
Second.
Moved in second. Roll call.
Mr. Milan?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mrs. Volcano?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Edinger?
Aye.
Congratulations, Ken.
Thank you. Thank you very much.